So what spot have you uh picked out?
What's up, everybody? And today we're gonna be looking at a turn barreling strategy for the button. And I wanna make a point to look at sizing. So the way this is going. Uh, the big blind check the flop. We see that small. He calls. The turn comes. He big blind checks and action is on us. Do you guys barrel here? Yes or no? And why?
Are we really barreling C betting small on this flop?
Well, if we add the hand like pocket nine, for sure not. But if we're just trying to bet small, I'm sure there's a small portion of this range. I wanna bet small with a queen. Because we get called by worst aces.
I'm pure checking here.
Checking, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty fifty.
Showdown.
Showdown, huh? I agree. Oh, we lost. Alright, we see that.
Are we are we assuming that all the C bets are like um thirty percent?
It's all gonna be two on the flop, yes.
I'm betting large here.
You're sizing out Ken. Why? Do you pick up equity?
Well, we could still get, we could start getting seven X to fold, five X to fold. We had, we did pick up equity. We still have all the best aces in our range. So uh, doesn't have a ton of showdown. I just think I can get hands. I just think we can get some hands to fold now.
A seven or a five, right?
Uh, yeah, I wanna bluff now and not river, like get my bluff through now, honestly.
What kinda size are you looking for here?
I'm gonna go like seven, which is at seven point nine.
You got twenty one behind.
That's fine.
You're going with it, basically.
Yeah, I think if we do this, we gotta go with the river too.
A little smaller.
A bit smaller. Five. Oh, we got it.
Yeah. Got him for a better hand.
Oh, Jack. I like Jax.
It's better for our age.
Turn double barreling?
Yeah. I would definitely double barrel up here because for stuff like.
Favors us and there's no benefit to checking. Let's go.
Yeah, exactly. Definitely a double barrel here because it's a K card for.
Yeah.
That's it. You got him just to fold it for seven. It's really sweet.
That's not a good card at all. It's as bad as it gets. It's a seven, so that helps him a lot. It's a spade, so that helps him a lot.
Pretty sweet having a spade and an eight. I'd rather have the jack as spades, but I'm still gonna bet. I'm still.
You're gonna bet. I definitely, I definitely wanna bet here.
I would.
Think it's that bad?
This is a bad card in my book. I'm never betting.
You should check raises.
I I think with the spade, I think with the spade though, we can bet.
Check raising a lot of his, almost all the sixes and then stuff that wrap around the sixes is gonna have a lot of sevens in it, right? Is check raise range. So like, um, the sevens, whatever to me.
Seven is.
Sizing.
You only got twenty one, so I don't know, maybe five?
Yeah, we gotta go five again, I think.
Oh, it's never checking.
Yeah, I was like, I was wondering why you thought it was such bad. I mean, it may be bad for the range.
It's a fresh card, so it's terrible. And please.
We have a spade though.
His range. And then it's a seven.
But look at his range. Look what he's check raising on the flop. He's check raising is all sixes, right? And it's stuff that wrap around the sixes, which is gonna be a ton of the sevens. So the seven is kind of irrelevant in my mind. I could be.
Okay, okay, okay. I can get behind that. That's really good thinking, I think.
Well, I could be wrong, so I'd like to say it.
No, I'm sure you're right.
That's really good.
No, I think you're right, Ken. Um, like he's check raising his king X. He should be check raising his six X and the cards that wrap around. So like, I think uh, he probably floated you with like hearts or something, some kind of backdoor. Garbage.
The big blind really have any or like a lot of check raising on king high board, so.
On paired boards with a with the sixes paired, he mostly different by raising.
Yeah, this this texture is definitely gonna have some raising.
So uh. He's got weak kings now, but uh, I don't know what the fuck to do.
I think we wanna unload the clip here, Louis.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess so.
What's wrong with you guys? He has it. We bet twice.
You can't fold a king, right?
On a torch.
There's no pocket pairs. You can't fold a king.
I'm all in.
He's got ace. We're targeting like ace high. I think.
It's never too late to give up. It's never too late.
Dude, you gotta.
Dude, you gotta. Fifteen big blinds.
I just give up.
This is such a good bluff. This is.
We we blocked a flush. We blocked it.
What is wrong with you guys? You nits. It's not even close.
It's not close.
Jack now blocking spades and uh, the straights.
Ooh, he's a red card because of the straight came in and duh duh duh. It's just bet.
I was talking.
Yeah, the straight came in and we blocked the shit out of it. So let's go.
Yeah, exactly. That's.
Yeah. Alright, so from the turn, why do you think?
I dare him.
Make it clear to me. Why do you think?
We got, we got Jack high. We interact very heavily with the six and the seven and the spades. I mean, it checks a lot of boxes for me.
Okay, because of direct interaction.
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
That's a great way of explaining it.
I think having the eight of spades is what makes me wanna.
Alright, and here, what's wrong with you guys?
We got eight nine, man. I'm all in. We got a straight. We got eight nine of spades, even better. We gotta flush. I'm all in.
We got eight nine of spades. I see, I see. See what we're doing.
Oh, my gods. We're still getting Jack four off jokes.
I think he's got, he's calling. He's probably floating queen highs to some extent. He's got some.
Alright.
But a- actually, Jack four off in this position might might actually be an all in too.
Can we see the big blind's turn range? Cause I just wanna see if he is lacking all the sevens like.
Hey, I would say this though, Louis. You, if you don't have the spade here, um, you probably do hard give up on that turn.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, I think it's the eight of spades that lets us.
So where's the sevens? Like, yeah, see, he has no sevens, right? When he gets to the turn.
Yeah, just a seven, king, seven.
And he has no, where are his sixes? He's got no sixes, right?
I really like your reasoning here, Ken.
And hardly any kings, honestly.
That's pretty good.
And look at our, look at our range on the turn.
In spade, right?
Yeah. Having the spade.
Well, the driving factor is the spade for all the bluffs.
I think so. And the eight to a lesser degree. I think that just having both of those in conjunction is just kinda like.
It prefers the nine.
Does it prefer the nine? Yeah.
Yes. And the ten even more.
Yeah, to me more was that the eight was a spade, not. Not necessarily.
Okay.
That it was the eight. Because we did pick up equity. If they don't have any spades, now we got outs on the river.
Yeah, if a river, if a river spade rolls off, it wants to have the bigger figure of your spade.
Alright, nice land to look at, I think.
That was a good one.
All in, ship the cookies. Well, let's look at the river. No, we bluff everything. Or is it just the perfect one? Oh, no, we are pretty heavy here. You ready, bud? Didn't see what he has.
He had the nuts.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Now it's our turn.
Straight. Spade, I'm less inclined to wanna bet here, but.
He can. I'm with you on this, but seems like you're wrong.
We got a straight.
We have a straight.
Great, man. You gotta, it's a party.
We have a, we have a straight and twenty big blinds. Let's get it in bad.
Ew, what size are you guys gonna go for?
Man, I was five point two. I ain't gonna lie.
Yeah, I was.
Three point one sounds like we're giving them too big of a price to float all the single spade hands.
Five point two looks good to me, man. I like five point two.
Say we have the flush here. What kinda size do we go for?
Five point two.
And then there you have the straight. Do you wanna go five point two?
I thought I did.
I think so.
Okay, and then.
I mean, I.
You have a stand here.
Louis, I I did see the answer when you clicked, but I probably wouldn't win. I would have went five point two.
Absolutely.
If you have a stand, what do you do?
I think I'm just gonna be like standardizing my bet size at five point two here typically.
Yeah, it's not good here. I click too fast.
Yeah, I'm, I'm following Camp Galen there. I'm this, I've, I always had the same thought process. Five point two.
I mean, I saw the answer. I'm not gonna change my answer because I saw it.
What is the answer? It goes smaller, so it's mixing that three.
Oh, well, there, there, there is five point two is a part of the strategy. So twenty percent five point two, thirty five percent three. So I have like a stand here is betting three unless you have the spade.
I guess on this texture, like aces and kings and queens aren't that strong, so we have to have mixing small bets with.
Aces is betting two unless or checking unless it has the spade. If it has this rated sizes up.
So.
Once that spade comes in, you really want to have a spade. Otherwise, you can't bet big.
We have some high equity hands and then some low equity hands is why we gotta split the range.
Yeah, you have to block, block his value here.
What was our hand? Jack nine off?
Yep. Jack nine no.
Jack nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, tie.
And Jack nine no spade.
Well, we're gonna bet small given we don't have a spade.
Well, it's, it still mixes five in with some even. It's some portion.
In general, you see the pattern, right?
Yeah, it it's more often with the spade, but still.
Why is king ten twice as valuable as aces? Uh, King ten suited? Are they just spades?
Yeah, the spade is the flushes.
We'll have it in higher frequency probably.
Yes, the flush.
Yeah, can we look at the EV? Is that the EV we're looking at? What are those numbers? The ten point?
Yeah, that's EV, ten point six.
So yeah, like the single pair of hands without redraws aren't very valuable, so they gotta go in the small bet bucket.
But. Here, if you look at the hand like king, jack, then the flush is going small.
Mm hmm.
But the, the other ones are going big.
Well.
They're. I know, seven, eight, other bluffs. These range, split ranges is hard as fuck, man.
Well, it's funny. You see how it polarized between trash? But this is the trash. Trash is going big or small, but trash is using the small, the big size the most and that best stands as well. It's a three bet here, and if we add a spade, we size up.
Yeah, stick it.
Ah, yeah.
Uh, but yeah, there's, there's not gonna be a lot of good rivers here, but we wanna keep his blocks in.
Yeah, I would not, I would not call in here. I mean, I would not fall, but. Okay. Got it. You have it, bro.
He's gotta have a bluff.
Yeah.
Do we double barrel here?
Uh, I think I like checking.
I think I like checking too, like.
Okay, so if the pattern we saw earlier are still good, we have the flush completed, we have a spade, we have top pair, so we could size up.
I don't think the same one.
No, not, not the same.
And we're. We gotta, yeah, we're in a much different hand class here, right? We have like a naked top pair and the board tilted towards straights and flushes. Like, I, you might bet here. I'm not gonna say you don't, but I, I like playing check here, I think.
The jack is a good range card for us. It's gonna bet.
And then it's only betting three.
Yeah, if it was a low card, I, I, we're definitely betting. If you wanna put like a, I think if you put like a five, a seven and eight, stuff like that, we're gonna probably barrel.
Yeah, I think the jack is just there.
The jack is just too good for our range, and I agree. Like, you put a smaller card on there that's not a range card, it's gonna check a lot more.
Do we put in a, another bet here or?
So it went check, check, turn. I think we do bet now. Um, and I wa- I like maybe six. You don't wanna go too small because you don't wanna incentivize check raising.
Yeah.
Or checks, but six is reasonable too.
Six is good. Pair board. We bet he calls. We still double barrel, I think.
I think we bet.
We beat, we beat all of his ace X here, like, cause our king plays. I definitely think we barrel. We're blocking the straight, so. I mean.
What kinda sizing?
I just like our range to put a lot of pressure on him, even with a small bet is why I'm thinking small.
Yep, paired board, so one point nine and three point one five.
I would go three point one five or five point whatever.
It is going five or check.
Yeah, it's going big again.
Interesting. Check that back.
Yeah, this, this kind of. I, I think we can, we can check this.
I'm checking back.
We can. I'm sure solver special goes for it sometimes.
You might bet here because you have the king.
I like.
You might bet, you might bet because you have the king.
I need a spade. I need a spade to bet. If I have one spade, if a king or an ace is a spade, I'm definitely betting without a spade. I'm checking back.
Check if we bet with the king of spades in this combo.
No, uh, we could.
Yeah.
We can't bet without.
Need to block value.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh.
The full. The house.
It's a full house.
I'm out there trying to value bet my top pair ten and they just have the full outs.
Yeah, this uh, this spot, um.
Five.
Ugh.
We didn't get check raised, so he floats a lot of pairs and aces, so we can go for value here.
Yeah, he doesn't have pocket pairs. We blocked some of his five. He's just got, I don't know what he's got here, honestly.
Uh, if we, if we bet, I kinda wanna go five, but I don't know, man, like. Yeah, I think five, I think five.
Paired board, I'm gonna go three.
Three's not a bad idea either.
Yeah, three and five. Mostly five.
Five. Hmm, we have a marginal made now, but the ten is very valuable in this, this shift here, um. I wouldn't be surprised to see some small bets, but uh, this is gonna be, this should be a primary check, I would guess.
Yeah, you know, again, I think I'd do like a smaller bet better now. We have.
Kinda like a small bet, a small bet to check river sometimes here.
I would size up here because the king is a key card for imposition. Our range.
Exactly.
It's positionally, yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely attractive for our range.
We're not playing the pair of jacks anymore. Our range just wanna bet this king big. Right.
I think we're still betting for value for sure with the jack.
Yeah, it wouldn't surprise me if Jack ten off with no spade checks here, though.
Our range wants to double barrel, but we do have a small, small frequency, small size is a big part of the strategy. So adding the spade is the driving factor with the big sides.
Yeah, yeah. No spade drives it down.
That makes good sense to me, I think. Uh, so we have our best unpaired hand. The five is like a pretty bricky card. I think we're gonna do a lot of checking here.
I'm still gonna wanna put pressure on there. Uh, I mean, when do we put pressure on? They have to bend every pair on the flop. I'm not betting again.
I would check here.
I'm, I'm checking here.
Kinda have a draw that is gonna struggle against our raise, and we win against show, uh, showdown if he has like queen ten. We beat all of his kings.
I bet a three, three. Check, okay.
After this line, I think he has a lot of jack X in his range, cause if he had the, after it goes check, check on the turn, I think he's supposed to blood bet a lot with all of his top pairs. So I think we could value bet the queen here for six.
Well, I mean.
So, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, no, he burns us.
Two pairs.
Did he?
Yeah.
Yeah, he had, he had flopped Jackson Boris.
You on myself again. Jesus.
Robbie Lou.
Jesus Christ. Okay, so I, we have a spade, so we can size out there.
Uh.
Our big ones.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yep, five.
Boom. Got the patterns.
We're, we're learning. Look at us.
He didn't check raise jacks last time, so I'm a little nervous here.
This is a check, man.
That, oh, a good flush. That double flush draw board is gonna polarize it, so it's gonna be really bigger or check.
I'm going like pot here.
Pot? Why pot?
Yeah.
It's easy, man. Like both of, both of the flush draws break, all of the draws break, and you have now made, like, he's, he's got a lot of bluff catchers here.
I see. You're gonna do that with your favorite seven, six of spade.
It went over.
Pop, it's gonna work with your bluffs.
Fourteen five it went.
Is that what we're? Yeah. I see, I see.
You can even, you can even do a, a Louis exploit and stuff the turkey.
Yep, you could go really bananas here. Uh, you go small here or five point two, like you keep going, you don't. You don't wanna go too crazy.
Alright.
Polarizing. We bet very small on the flop. We polarize here.
Off the turkey.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all in. I mean, there's just nothing else to do there.
So lose all the money.
Hmm. Alright, now I wanna keep some time for hand reviews. You guys got hands that you want to review? Hands you're not sure of? I have one to show right away. Cause, yeah.
I like it when Louis laughs.
Uh, you wanted me to run that? Is that why you said it?
Uh, no, I, I, hey, I actually did run this. This is, um, this is too wide.
Okay, so how can I show without showing the results?
Uh, final table.
You know what happened?
So.
Yeah, it's too late.
Daily big twenty. There's four players left. I opened the button to big blinds from a twenty seven big blind stack. My opponent is a lose aggressive, super regular, lots of winnings, good player. Walter wine goes all in for thirty big blind. The action is back on me and I have ace ten suited.
And that's a short stack at the table, right?
Yeah, there's a Nate big blind here.
Oh, this is final tape.
This is final table, so. If you've run the hand before, don't say anything, but what do you guys?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you.
I guess your thing is good, but I guess you have to still be tight because of eight point four, but then you don't have as much pressure because it's four players left. You can still do. So I just know, cause you guys said the answer. I mean, it's suited. It's close.
What do you mean? We said the answer. No one said the answer.
I gave an opinion.
So it is the way I saw it. I, I, I saw that it's button versus big blind first. Second. With the short stack here, I'm supposed to make very big folds and he knows it.
Yeah.
So it's a, I know that he know, I know kinda thing, right?
But then the, you can't do nothing about it.
And then he, he's suppo- is he not supposed to rip all of his offsuit aces? Ace doos off, ace three off, ace four off, ace five off, ace six off, ace seven off, ace eight off, bring it.
I don't know.
Is he not supposed to rip that?
I don't know.
I can, I can tell. If you're asking, I'll tell you the answers.
No, 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 no. I'm asking everyone else, not what they do. And then is he not supposed to rip pocket deuce, pocket three, pocket four, pocket five, pocket six, pocket seven?
I think it works also.
So much pressure here on me because of.
I think he's, I think he's ripping like ace five off and then skipping all the crap in the middle and then jumping up to ace nine off probably.
So all of this said now. What do you guys think about this? Or three thirty big line stack? There's one very short stack. Is this a call or?
I mean, I think it's.
I think it's a fold.
I don't want to gamble.
How about this? If, how about this? If you think it's a fold, what is the worst hand you call with?
I think ace jack suited.
Uh, ace exuded, ace queen off, uh, like tens. Tens plus, nines plus.
Might even, yeah, there's, there's kind of three people who are pretty equistacked here, eh? And one short.
It's like a three-way tie, it's a three-way tie for first essentially, right?
You just, you don't want, you don't want to flip in this spot. So I think I am folding and I'm gonna run ace queen here. I also don't think I'm jamming fives.
What are you jamming, Pete?
Uh, I am going to want to be ahead of the ace five. Um, so I'm gonna probably jam sevens or eights. From his spot. I wanna be ahead more often.
This might be one of those spots, Peter, where sixes and fives might be better than seven and eights before blocking the bomb.
Okay, question, guys. Question. Ace jack suited.
I'm calling ace jack suited.
Calling. What do we do with jacks?
Call.
Call. Call.
Tens.
Call.
Nines.
I'm out.
Uh, I don't like nines. I mean, I think we, I, I think nines, I don't wanna, we don't need, we don't need to do nines anymore.
Call with nines.
I wanna.
Call with nines.
But it's more handed. It's getting close.
On the chart, on the chart that you have now, I'm kind of on the fence about ace jack suited, king queen suited and nines.
Yeah, I'm not. King queen suited. Get that out of there.
Yeah, it's an arrow. You're.
How do you slip that one in there, you loose maniac?
Ace jacked off is a definite fold, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ace ten suited?
No.
Primary, primary fold.
Everyone is folding here. The ace ten suited.
I'm fifty fifty with ace ten suited.
I'm not sure about ace jack suited.
Yeah, I agree. I, I'm ace queen here because like you just don't wanna flip. This, this is a terrible spot to flip and lose.
Got too much gamble in me.
So there's some goofy stuff going on here. Like, there's a, there's a caveat that we need to address first if, before we get to the answer. And I think Louis has it in his, in our chat log, but um, I ran this and Walter wine is overaggressing here, not adjusting appropriately. He's not supposed to be jamming that region of hands. Um, in fact, like he doesn't jam terribly too much. He's got some polar combos here, so like the offsuit trashy stuff, whoever said that, and then some of the suited. High-low stuff. And then like, he's, he's protecting with ace, king and queens, but notice. Um, no pairs really in there in that region. And um, what this did was for our response. I think ace jack, I, I didn't post the response here, but it was ace jack was the floor. Um, ace jack suited was the floor of the calling range. And then it was just ace, king offsuit. Like, it didn't wanna call any of the offsuit stuff, and it, I think it called like nines plus or something. Like, it went kind of wide with the pairs. I don't remember.
After looking at the summary solution, we added a few small pairs to.
Yeah.
Our own strategy.
Yeah, I gave him the polar pairs, just to make it somewhat realistic and not draw too many extra conclusions, and it made us tighter and wider in some aspects. Um, made us tighter in calling the top end of our range, but quite a bit wider with our pairs when he does this.
So all the pairs that dominate his pairs went way up in value and then. So all the pairs that dominate his pairs went way up in value and then our unmade heads went down in value.
And, uh, like I was saying, the, it was calling ace queen, ace jack before, and now it's like, it's almost two pips tighter here. When he's jamming these little pairs.
That's interesting.
I thought it was interesting too, and I think it just is kind of this idea of you're a three-way tie for first place and you really don't want to be flipping here very frequently. Like it's just, you, you don't wanna put yourself in those.
Yeah, if you balance out those small pairs with a few more aces in his range, it's gonna start calling the ace queen there.
Yeah.
I thought about that and, um, I, 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 if I would have been more motivated yesterday afternoon, I might have added some of that and looked at it, but. I would say that's a, a good hypothesis.
I love how the pushfold call, it always, it always depends on their range, so it's not really, what is the answer? It's what is their actual.
Well, that's, you're right, and that's the importance of, uh, being able to, you know, build character profiles or player profiles to some degree of accuracy. And, you know, Louis.
I made that call because I thought it was close, but I thought it was because of the reasons I mentioned. I thought it was a good call, um, way out, and then Walter Wine, look at his emoji game. He's like so confusing.
He was upset.
What are you doing, man? Like, you suck. Oh my god, you, and then he's so unhappy. He's like, you suck.
Didn't he make a bigger mistake than you though?
I would, uh, I would say, Ken, um, over, overaggressing. Yeah, I was gonna say, overaggressing is more of a, less a mistake than overcalling.
If we're thinking about what ranges we're supposed to be jamming here and what ranges we're supposed to be calling. If he's jamming appropriately, ace ten becomes close to a call. But he jammed way too wide. Now ace ten isn't a call, but if we're thinking about what we should be doing. Now he's gotta run fives against, now we're calling wider, like he's forcing us to call wider than we should, right? But then our hands that we're calling with are gonna have good equity against his small pairs. Cause now we're calling wider than we should.
I think.
Less valuable, right?
Neither, neither person here wants to necessarily click the call button and run equity. You just don't wanna do that. Especially with like a five to ten percent deviation and who wins this. I mean, that's a coin flip. And there's a three-way tie for first place and a short stack, so. Every chip that Louis or Walter Wine invest here is, um, pretty valuable at this point, right? Like, it's the difference between fourth and first place money in, in, in a lot of instances. So, you know, I think.
Yes, no, I took second.